Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, June 25th, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'd like to welcome our Director of Public Health, Dr. Matt Richardson for he's going to lead us in our invocation and then our pledges will be led by Kevin Carr, our Chief Information Officer. I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones and please stand.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Feel bad with me. Our Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to bring our Thanksgiving and our gratitude and our concerns to you this morning. Father, there are many in this audience that are joyful and celebratory of so many of the good gifts that you give and the many blessings that are bestowed on each of us. And Father, there are those of us in the audience this morning who are hurting and are suffering and Father, we ask for your grace and your mercy and your peace to be given to them in endless measure. Father, this is the life that we lead and Father, we ask for the wisdom and the strength to follow you and the example of your son. Father, we just ask that we be empowered and emboldened to reflect you. Father, we know that that's what you ask and we ask for a heart of gratitude and compassion and kindness for others. And God, we honestly, that's difficult to do sometimes and so we ask for that from you. Father, we thank you for this court and their leadership. We thank you for the community in which we live. Father, we thank you for those that protect us every day. Again, God, we are so thankful, but we come to you asking for your continued grace and mercy for each of us because we need it. And Father, we thank you for Jesus and his example and again, we ask that we can glorify you through that example and it's through his name we pray this morning. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the U.S. and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson and thank you, Kevin. At this time, I'd like to go to item one, which is our public input for items not listed on the agenda. And we have one person registered for this particular item and that is Jason Poole. Hello, sir. Good morning. Glad to have you here. I will let you know that our public comment forums are limited, speakers are limited to three minutes, okay? And I'll go ahead and set the stopwatch.
And I'm also familiar that you won't be able to respond to me.
That is true.
I work in government, so.
Then you know the drill. Well, thanks for being here. Let's go ahead and start.
All right. I live in the Lake Ray Roberts zoning jurisdiction up near Lake Ray Roberts. White Oak Municipal Utility District is attempting to form in Denton County up there. A substantial portion of it is actually located in the Lake Ray Roberts zoning district. The preliminary information that the MUD district has provided to TCQ does not remotely comply with any of the zoning categories that are available in the Ray Roberts zoning district. TCQ, mostly due to some active citizen input in that area, has forwarded this MUD formation process into their special office of administering hearings process. Where on June 4th, there was a preliminary hearing. At that hearing, Denton County was added as an official affected party. Also at this preliminary hearing, the judge directed the MUD attorney to generate a joint schedule for mediation and the hearing process. After that hearing last week on Friday, after giving Denton County and the affected parties a whopping 2.5 days to review the schedule, they filed the final schedule with the TCQ and the Special Office of Administering Hearings. On that particular final submission, I was listed as a person not agreeing to the schedule and Denton County was listed as a non-response. I chose to live in the Lake Ray Roberts area because of the zoning category and the protections it provided me in my house. I come for you today to mainly make sure that you guys are aware that we were given a 2.5 day notice to review a legal schedule last week and that you guys did not respond. I'm asking that Denton County vigorously defend its zoning authority in the Ray Roberts area on this development or abolish their ordinance because if it doesn't apply to them, it needs to not apply to those of us who have chosen to live under it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you need a schedule, a staff member?
Yeah, that'd be great. We'll be happy to follow up with you. We have written a letter of opposition, so we'll be happy to follow up with you. Thank you for letting us know. All right, we have two other public comment forums, but those are for particular items, so we will proceed past that. Let's go to item four A. And four A is our public hearing to consider the creation of the Denton County Local Provider Participation Fund. Before we have the public hearing, I would like to welcome up Mr. Mike O'Neill. And he's the General Counsel for Adelanto Healthcare Ventures and he is going to explain the purpose of the local provider participation funds. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge Eads. As you said, my name is Michael Neal. I'm an attorney with Adelanto Healthcare Ventures. Adelanto Healthcare Ventures has been working with Denton County Hospitals to request the creation of a local provider participation fund. Local provider participation funds, the short name for those are LPPFs, are not new. But before we get into explaining those, I want to talk about some of the overwhelming support we have here today at this hearing and we do appreciate your time. We have in the back here, an overwhelming number of representatives from Denton County Hospitals. We have representatives from Texas Health Resources, HCA, Medical City, Baylor Scott &amp; White and Cook Children's. They're all here today because they understand the importance and the benefit that can come to Denton County through the creation of an LPPF. As I said, LPPFs aren't anything new. They are structured by the, in statute by the Texas Legislature that provides counties the authorities to set up an LPPF. Currently, they're in about 30 different jurisdictions throughout the state of Texas, counties big, small, rural areas, urban areas. And what LPPFs do is they provide the authority for hospitals to contribute hospital money to help fund the non-federal share for Medicaid, right? And so by providing that non-federal share, it then unlocks or draws down matching federal funds. These federal funds are then used by local hospitals to provide Medicaid services, healthcare services to those who are in need, the uninsured in your local Denton community here. The, it's probably known, but it bears repeating, that Medicaid rates typically, on average, only pay about 60 cents on the dollar for the costs incurred by these hospitals who are providing these much-needed services. What the LPPF does is it helps bridge the gap. It allows hospitals to work and provide the non-federal share to match, for those matching federal funds, to draw those funds down, to help close that gap, so that your local Denton County hospitals can continue providing these much-needed services for your citizens, for your residents in this county here. And that's important for a number of reasons, right? It ensures that those folks can still get the services they need here in Denton County, especially with the growth in this community, without having to go to other jurisdictions because those hospitals will have the funds needed to support those services. It frees up the hospitals, allows them to use their funding to increase their services, to retain medical professionals, to recruit medical professionals, and extend services as needed to ensure that this continues to go as needed to provide this care for them. So we're very excited to be here today. We think this is a good thing for Denton County, certainly a good thing for the Denton County hospitals and your residents. We're happy to answer any questions here. We have some finance groups from our organization as well. And I know, happy to answer any questions that y'all may have about LPPFs here in Denton County.
Perfect. Thank you for that overview. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in our public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the creation of the Denton County Local Provider Participation Fund? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Denton County Local Provider Participation Fund creation? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Members, are there any, do you have any questions or comments or anything we need to discuss or do we have a motion for approval?
Just real quick, Judge, if you don't mind.
Yep.
So I want to make it clear to the citizens, because I don't think it was just then when the gentleman was speaking, that the hospitals aren't currently turning people away and asking people to go to other cities that, instead of taking care of our citizens at this point, just because this program's not in place. What it amounts to is it is a loss for the hospitals to take these individuals because they don't get reimbursed the same amount. So, which I totally understand from a business perspective, but I just want to make it very clear that our hospitals here in Denton County are not turning people away because of this particular scenario not being in place. I think it's very important to say that because I think that you could misunderstand what that gentleman just said, that we don't take care of our citizens just because this fund is not in place. So I just want to make sure that's clear and I think all the hospitals would appreciate that as well. Nobody wants to look like they don't take care of patients. When they come in the door, nobody's kicking anybody out.
Yes, Commissioner Edmondson. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, push and hold it now real tight. There we go. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. I'd like to, Commissioner Williams, thank you so much for providing that extra information. I'd like also for people to understand, this is not your taxpayer money that we're talking about.
Right.
These are the hospitals participating out of their own funds, their own profits, so that they can provide more and better services. So I see absolutely nothing but an upside on this whole proposal.
That's, thank you, Commissioner Edmondson. That's correct. And Commissioner Williams, thank you for those comments. I greatly appreciate it. And I do not mean to imply that at all. Certainly, a little bit of clarification is a good thing oftentimes, especially when things like this are up. But yes, that's absolutely right. No one's being turned away. We just see this as a, you know, looking forward, you know, to help everyone, help the community forward.
Go right ahead. Commissioner Mitchell?
I don't think we can have too many avenues to help those that are undeserved. And I am so pleased with the hospital organization here this morning that's willing to step up and provide dollars that can help because we know that there are services that are needed all over the county. Thank you for being willing to take your tax dollars and help our undeserved people. I appreciate it.
And I would just like to, did you want to say that before?
Yes.
I'll wrap it up. Go ahead.
If we have, well, I want to echo what Diane mentioned as well, that this is not the creation of a county hospital district that is going to be taxing citizens in any way. This is only the funds coming from the hospitals. And by the way, want to make sure that we're clear too, that any funds that are coming back from that Medicaid match, don't get passed along to those customers, right? I mean, you're not.
That's correct, Your Honor. Commissioner Falconer, the statute makes it very clear that hospitals are not allowed to add on a surcharge for their patients for this fund.
Right. So it's not going to do that either. So it's really just a way to bring some of those funds in, in matching. I also wanted to make sure, I think we have 18 or so hospitals that would be part of this program, right, within Denton County? And there's none, maybe not all that necessarily have signed on as that we love it, but none have said that they would oppose it. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. So yeah, we don't have anyone, none of those that have said, hey, we're going to oppose this, which I think is key because the other thing I wanted to make sure, that how the collection, granted it's only 18, but those funds have to be collected and then, A, how is that being done and then, B, what happens if one of the hospitals isn't paying?
Yeah, that's a great question. The county would send out those assessments, just as they typically would. We assist counties throughout the state of Texas and typically, we don't see that issue happening where someone just says, I'm not going to pay. Though we typically work with them to explain that to them and then, worst case scenario, it would be a normal procedure just as if any payment was due to the county that was not made.
And, oh, so we would be the one kind of bird dogging the hospital that's not paying?
In theory, yes, but I'm not aware that that's ever happened.
And the, whatever cost, granted it should be very low because there's 18 hospitals. This isn't, this isn't 180,000 individuals. So 18 hospitals, but any cost that we have, is there any repayment or anything that would happen for that?
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner Falconer. And the statute does allow Denton County to retain up to $150,000 from the LPPF funds to cover your administrative costs because we do know that there is some administrative work that is required of the county.
So, which is what I thought. And so I just wanted, just for residents who are like, well, what do, in theory, this really costs a Denton County taxpayer zero, right? It is, it is not, certainly not a tax and not even going to increase their burden from a general and administrative type thing.
That's correct. I couldn't have said it better myself.
Okay, very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, on behalf of the court, I would just like to thank y'all for being here today. Thank you for our hospitals. As Commissioner Mitchell said, we appreciate what you do on a daily basis. We've grown so close together over the last few years and we got to see as that relationship developed and became more forged, the great work that y'all do on a daily basis, year in, year out, for all these decades. And so, thank you. You know, I believe that the creation of this fund will help make our hospitals more healthy and in a financial standpoint. And so, strong and healthy hospitals makes for a strong and healthy public, so, and a strong and healthy Denton County. So I want to thank y'all for bringing this forward to us. I'd also like to thank Brooke Hanbrick for all her efforts on this. Thank you, Brooke. You've been working with, this is not something that just happened overnight. We've been working on this for months and doing our due diligence and our research and looking at best practices and making sure that the. and looking at best practices, and making sure that the protections were in place for the, for the public, and it's exactly what they are. And so I want to thank you, Brooke. Jeff May, thank you for your willingness to participate, and your assistance, and our treasure. Cindy Brown, thank you as well, and I just want to, and Dr. Richardson, I know you've been a party to many of these conversations, so thank you. All the different disciplines of the county have been involved in this, and so thank y'all for all your diligence on that. There's no other comments. The chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now let's go over to, that's item 4A. And members, if you'll please turn to, go ahead while we have our guests here. And we'll go ahead and go to item 13E. 13E is approval of the Denton County, of Denton County participating in the County Healthcare Provider Participation Program, collection of a mandatory payment and the use of, use of funds from mandatory payments, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, thank you, y'all guests, for being here today. You're welcome to leave, or you're welcome to stay, whichever y'all wanted, if I know you are busy people. Thank y'all for being here.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank each of you. All right. Members, next, let's go to item two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull, or do we have a motion for approval as presented?
I'd like to pull item two, 2A, Judge.
Two, item 2A, okay. So members, we'll pull that. Do we have a motion for approval for items 2B through 2I?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today for two, for, our first consent agenda item today is for 2B, approval of the Department of Transfers. Item 2C is approval of the July 5, 2024 payroll. Item 2D is approval of the Budgetman Request 101610 for the Public Facilities Department to transfer five thousand dollars from Facilities Management Janitorial Services to Equipment Maintenance to fund a newly awarded exterior lighting inspection service agreement. Item 2E is approval of Budgetman Request 101620 for Public Health to transfer thirty thousand dollars from various line items to medical supplies to cover the cost of supplies for primary care and family planning for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item 2F is approval of Budgetman Request 101630 for the Public Facilities Department to transfer two thousand dollars from Facilities Management Contract Labor to Hospitality Supplies to purchase beverages and supplies for employees and visitors for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item 2G, approval of Budgetman Request 101640 for Constable Precinct 3 to transfer three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for administrative supplies to vehicle equipment to cover the cost of removing emergency equipment from an existing patrol vehicle and added a consult package to a new patrol vehicle. Item 2H is approval of film permit request and request to waive filming fees by Jalen Nichols with South Road Holdings to film a Quakertown documentary at the Denton County Historical Park for the week of July 8, 2024. And item 2I is approval of recording purposes only, the May 2024 Road Superintendent Report, and any appropriate action. Let's go back to, we have a motion, a second, we've already voted on that. Let's go back to item 2A. Commissioner Mitchell.
Judge, I pulled that item because it did not meet the qualifications for the promotion, and I'd like for our Human Resource Director to explain that to us. Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. Before you, you have two agenda items under 2A. 2A1 is the ones that we are recommending, all the positions and new hires that meet the criteria for the positions. And then we have 2A21, which is the position that Porchus in is requesting, in which the candidate does not meet the minimum qualifications.
Okay. And that's why I pulled it. So I'm going to recommend that we not approve that, Commissioners. That's my comment.
Do you want to recommend approval of position according to the hiring guidelines?
Yes.
So you have a motion to approve the new hire, but according to hiring guidelines? Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
All right.
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Williams. Any other discussion?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Judge.
Sure.
So I think that, you know, this is, this is not the first time this has happened, will be the last time this kind of thing happens. You know, the guidelines are there for a reason, and instead of coming in and us always making adjustments to and asking for exceptions, you know, if the guidelines are inappropriate or don't fit properly, we need to look at the guidelines and look at that, which is one thing we'll be doing going through the compensation study that we're going to be doing here, hopefully, in the near future. So I'm looking forward to having all that input from the managers and the supervisors of all those divisions, so.
But not right now.
But just right, yeah, yes, sir, that is correct. Just, it's a timing scenario, and again, I appreciate everybody understanding what we're trying to accomplish, so, thank you, sir.
Perfect. All right, we have a motion, and a second. Any other comments?
Could I just add, I want to clarify on the motion, make sure, do we need to also include approval of all the other?
We did approve the other one.
We already did that with the first, because it's only one agenda item on the agenda.
Yeah, but we pulled that one from that one agenda.
I know, that's why I'm asking if we need to include that.
If I may, there are two court orders. One is the 2A that is the recommended.
The one that's exceptional.
Right. I just, I just want to clarify, because we have not voted on 2A at all, so I want to make sure, do we need to specify that we're approving the 2A1 ones?
Is that clear for the county clerk?
So we are pulling 2A, and that is pulled, and then we are just making the motion, and second on 2A1. Is that correct?
We're not doing the one that was not recommended by the Human Resource Director.
Okay.
2A1. 2A2, actually, of the 2A. Yeah.
Maybe, maybe just to be clear, if we could end that motion, Bobby, if we, could we actually say we're approving, we're approving?
All of the other.
All the others with the 2A1.
To clarify, I think that's what Commissioner Mitchell was explaining, and I think that's , so that is the, that is the motion at hand, the previous one.
Yeah.
For, for 2A1.
Correct.
2A1 approved. 2A2 is not.
The one that we did not.
2A2 is the one, the motion to approve all the other in 2A. We're approving all those except 2A2.
2A1, and all the remaining other two items was what we voted on.
Yes.
And now we're on the second item, which is the one at 2A2.
That's the one I pulled.
Which is the one that did not, correct.
That we approved.
So we already voted on all those that were, that were compliant.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so.
According to the guidelines of our Human Resources.
So we have a motion, and a second, to hire the new, to promote the new hire according to the existing hiring guidelines. That is the motion at hand. Do we have any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
All right. Next, let's go to item 5A, approval of the bill report payments from CSCD, Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Fortune, VIT, Interest, and DA Fortune Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 5B, acceptance and approval of the unaudited fiscal year 2024 monthly financial reports through April 2024. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. Again, this month, that was, the biggest things going on are our investment revenues are higher than estimated, and our tax revenues are coming in higher, as I expected, with the issues I've discussed with y'all before. And we're going to be adjusting the revenue estimates in the budget next year to start taking those into account. And we'll discuss that when the budget comes around. But other than that, things look like they're coming in as expected, and I didn't see any surprises.
Those are the good problems to have.
That's correct.
Good, good. All right, do we have, we have a motion for approval?
So move.
Second, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next is item 5C, approval of the proposed revisions to the reimbursement of travel conference expenses policy. This is 8.1, and any appropriate action.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I just, I, I just, I'd sent, I'm fully in agreement with the, but I had just sent Jeff a couple of typo things that I think we're all good with.
And section G, there's a verbiage that has a typo that I just need to fix. It doesn't change.
Doesn't change anything, just tie it, just.
Just administrative cleanup.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, so we can, we'll, we'll approve it with a proposed grammatical change. All right, we have a motion, and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6A, approval of renewal of annual subscription licenses to absorb software from SHI Government Solutions in the amount of sixty-four thousand two hundred and ten dollars through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract 121993SHI, and any appropriate action.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6B, approval of renewal of bid 222704 Corrugated Galvanized Metal Pipe to ConTech Engineered Solutions. Any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6C, approval of specifications authorized to advertise ITB-24-2821 Tree Lighting Annual Maintenance.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 6D, is approval of specifications authorized to advertise for ITB-242822 Ripley Road Culvert Replacement, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6E, approval of acknowledgement of notification of acquisition and vendor name change to Saratoga Rack Marketing LLC to Tartan Oil LLC, and any appropriate action.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6F, which is approval of updates to procedures and additions and deletions to the construction project user group and steering committees. I have a couple of questions here. If you could. It was, I appreciate the updates, but, like she was saying, Commissioner Falconer, some cleanup language on the other item. I would propose that under that page one, under where it shows the chart, that would, it says representative of Commissioners Court, and I would make that say representatives of Commissioners Court on that first page. And then, it references county administration on these steering committees as a standing person, individual, and it's not reflected over here on our construction project committees.
And that needs to be.
And so, I would propose that, under the historical park that you were to add, Jody Gonzalez, and under the Cole Building, there's a typo on Judge McCary's name, and then I would also add her to the steering committee where you're at. Commissioner Mitchell, I would add Judge McCary and Jody. And then I think the, the next one down needs to be the Denton County EOC for consistency purposes, and I would delete Eric Hutmacher. And on the next one, which is the Courts Building, it's Jasmine Dodson, not Jasmine Dodd, and Bruce Isaacs was on our committee and provided valuable input, and I don't see his name reflected on there. And then, that's consistent with what we've been working with that group for many years, and then I would add Jody onto the, the Court of Social and the Square Preservation, as it's consistent with the other part of the, the other part of the document beginning. So does anyone have any questions or concerns about that? That would be my motion to approve that with those edits.
So I didn't, this is really not a recommendation as much as a discussion item. On the user group, there's a modification to include, in addition to making recommendations to making changes, which I think does happen occasionally, but I didn't know if we wanted to add. We added, I think, adding space allocation in there, which I think is fair, but I didn't know if we wanted to add anything.
The court still makes the ultimate decision, but it's just a recommendation.
That's, that's where I want to make sure that we're clear, is that there are some of those things that should be only recommendation. In addition, there's some additional types of work that is happening in there with that group, and I didn't know if we wanted to add anything else.
So are you saying we take off making decisions?
Well, that was added, and.
Who added it?
I don't, I don't know. I didn't add it, but.
But there's no decision made without the court.
You know, in, in, having worked through, there are some, there are some things, there's some, there are some decisions that get made, but ultimately, everything gets approved by the court.
Yeah.
Then why are we adding making decisions?
So I'd probably say, take that off, just to, just to clearly make sure that we do that.
Yeah.
And, and then I think there's, yeah, and then the question is, do we, yeah, thank you, because I pulled it. Do we, do we want to have anything in there about programming some other pieces? We can add that in the future, too, if you like. So maybe we just do this, and then we can talk about that a little more.
Okay, so my motion would be for those items I just articulated, and then with also the deletion of, under the steering committee, fourth bullet, to say responsible for preparing recommendations for the Commissioners Court, and delete the making decisions. That'd be the motion.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, thank you. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all. Next is item 6G, approval of Evaluation Committee's recommendation to rank the Farnsworth Group as the most qualified firm for the HVAC equipment replacement under RFPQ 23277A Building Commissioning Services, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner, who was second to that?
I did.
Oh, Falconer, thank you. With motion and second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6H, approval of Evaluation Committee's recommendation to rank EST Inc. as the most qualified engineering firm for the Fish Trap Road Project under RFPQ 232767 Trip 22 on System Projects, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6I, approval of award of RFP 242811 Medical Laboratory Services for Jail and Public Health to Lab Corp, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven A. Approval of Budget Man Request one-zero-one-six-five-zero for emergency management of transfer one thousand five hundred dollars within capital equipment and five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars to administrative equipment from capital equipment for a total transfer of seven thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars for the Office of the Governor Community Emergency Response Team Grant to purchase a, a deployable shelter and training equipment. Any appropriate action?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A. Report from Human Resource Regarding Hiring Actions of Elected Officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge Commissioners, good morning again. We have one promotion in the county clerk, two new hires in adult probation, one new hire in J P three, one new hire in J P five, one new hire in U N A probation, one new hire in the Sheriff's Office. That is a detention officer one. One rehired in the Sheriff's Office, one promotion in the Sheriff's Office, one demotion in the Sheriff's Office, one new hired in the Tax Office, and one demotion in the Tax Office. That's it for this week.
Perfect, thank you, sir. That is, again, that is presented for recording purposes only. Next let's go to item eight B. Approval of the creation of an additional temporary slot for a bar card intern pay grade ten for the District Attorney's Office.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight C. Approval of revision to policy six point two Employee Appreciation Events. Any appropriate action?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight D. Approval of the downgrade of slot zero-one-four S O Deputy Sheriff Animal Control Pay Grade one-zero-seven to an animal services officer pay grade nine in the Sheriff's Office.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Yes, sir. Please proceed.
I just, I'm, I'm happy to see this because I think this is wholly appropriate, and I think, because that position's been open for a while, and we really need that position filled. So I think this does kind of two things. It'll save us some money, and we'll get that position filled.
Yep. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item ten A. Approval of the Indian Trails Estates Phase Three Final Plat Lots One through thirteen and Lot One X. This is sixteen point five zero-two acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A. Approval of the twenty-twenty-four-twenty-twenty-five interlocal agreement for shared governance communications and dispatch services system between Denton County and Copper Canyon Police Department. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B.
Judge, I'm sorry, um, we still have item nine A.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to say that we have pulled item nine A for today. Thank you for mentioning that. We pulled that. Thank you, Yanka. Next is twelve B. Approval of Amendment to the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-twenty-four interlocal agreement for the shared governance communications and dispatch services system with the town of Copper Canyon.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item twelve C. Approval of Amendment to the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-twenty-four interlocal agreement between Denton County and the Town of Copper Canyon Police Department for the use of the Denton County Radio Communication System.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item twelve D is approval of the twenty-twenty-four-twenty-twenty-five Law Enforcement Agency Application for Participation by the Denton County Sheriff's Office and the Department of Defense, the D O D Law Enforcement Support Office. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve E. Approval of Amendment Number Four to the Memorandum of Understanding by and between the University of North Texas, U N T, and Denton County, transferring ownership of various, uh, various equipment items. Any appropriate action? Item, motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, I'll go ahead and welcome up Samantha Taylor. This is thirteen A. Discussion and Possible Action Related to the Disaster Declaration Executive Order E O two-four-zero-five-two-eight-two-eight for severe weather. Any appropriate action? Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Thank you for having me. So we're just requesting today to extend the disaster declaration, continue on with that process from the previous court. Uh, we're still trying to gather data on cost tracking for our threshold. Um, I know some public works, um, and our transportation engineering is still working clear debris. And, um, we still have FEMA out in the field. Uh, we do have Butterfield Elementary still open for our disaster recovery center for FEMA to go in person to apply for FEMA assistance. Uh, that is going to be closed this coming Saturday, um, close of business at seven. But they'll still be in the area for a period of sixty days to help answer any questions regarding the application process.
Perfect. All right, is there any discussion related to that? I want to thank y'all for your continued good efforts. All right, do we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is thirteen B. Approval to request to submit a grant application to the Office of Justice Programs and the Bureau of Justice Assistance, the J B A, for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four State Criminal Alien Assistance Program in amount of three hundred nine thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars under application number O B J A two-zero-two-four-one-seven-two-zero-three-two. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen C. Approval of request to amend the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five Texas Intergent Defense Commission Improvement Grant, Grant Number one-one-six-two, Year Four of Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen D. Approval of Change Order Number One for the Denton County Courthouse on the Square H V A C renovation project to provide new two, two-hundred-and-eight votes and twenty amp circuit for the nearest panel shared by each control box, a total of four in the basement per proposed change order number seven, adding to the contract in amount of nine thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Yes, ma'am.
I, I'd like the public to see how detailed this motion is, and just to let you know, we are accounting to you as our taxpayers for every dime that we spend, even to the extent of telling you which box we're going to be changing on this electrical thing. So I think it just shows that we're really transparent with our taxpayers.
Absolutely, absolutely. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen F. Approval of Denton County Participating in North Texas State Fair and Rodeo from August of sixteenth through twenty-twenty-five-twenty-twenty-four with an information booth promoting various county departments. Any appropriate action?
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A. Approval of supplemental agreement number one to the Professional Engineering and Services Agreement. Serving and Services Agreement between Denton County, Texas and Westwood Professional Services, formerly Pacheco Co. Consulting Engineers for the Jackson Road Project from U S three-eighty to Mosh Branch Road in the additional amount of one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars, raising the current contract from one million nine hundred fifty-five thousand six hundred twenty dollars to two million one hundred forty-eight thousand one hundred twenty dollars with funding amount of one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars to come from countywide unincorporated roadway improvements. Trip Twenty-Two Auterline Item eight-nine-seven-five-eight-zero-nine-zero-three-zero and to be transferred to Jackson Road Precinct Four Auterline Item eight-nine-seven-four-two-one-nine-zero-three-zero. Any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen B. Approval of the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-twenty-four interlocal cooperation agreements for fire protection services between Denton County, Texas and the City of Denton Fire Department, the City of Highland Village Fire Department, and Ponderville Volunteer Fire Department. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by the Chair. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C. Approval of the twenty-twenty-three-twenty-twenty-four interlocal cooperation agreements for ambulance service between Denton County, Texas and the City of Highland Village Fire Department Ambulance Services. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I would, sixteen A. Approval of Budget Man Request one-zero-one-five-six-zero to transfer, to transfer from General Fund County Vehicles Unappropriate Contingency to vehicles for one hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and from Roden Bridge Fund County Vehicles Unappropriate Contingency to vehicles and for twenty-nine thousand eight hundred two dollars for a total transfer of two hundred seven thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars to cover the increased cost of vehicles for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four vehicles as recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Go right ahead. Commissioner Fa- Falconer.
I'm, I'm, Ryan's the, the...
So, yeah, I'll, I'll go real quick.
All right, go right ahead.
Um, I think it's important for everybody to understand, you know, obviously there's a, uh, we had to come back and ask for, for more money. And the reason that is, is Denton County decided a couple of years ago with the vehicle issues to, uh, push, push us approving our vehicle orders earlier than normal. And we, we get them through before we actually get the true M S R P that's released by the manufacturers. So what ends up happening is we approve it, and then by the time the vehicles actually are available, they've changed their pricing that we now have to adopt. So, so I think it's imperative that everybody understand that it's not that we're inappropriately budgeting. It's, we're trying to be ahead of the curve, which has actually been very good for us as a county, allowing us to purchase vehicles that other counties may not have, uh, puts us first on the list, if you will. So, um, anyway, I just want to make that clear.
Thanks, thank you for that, Commissioner Falconer.
Sorry, Commissioner.
And, and Commissioner Williams clarified most of that, since he's a representative on the Vehicle Assessment Committee. I, but I think, and, and Ryan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we, we, sometimes we have to, we may, and in this case, we may need to also modify some of those policies a little bit. As the, um, vehicles are now more available, that we don't put ourselves in a situation where we're overpaying for a vehicle that we may, and I think we're kind of looking at that.
Of course, yeah. I mean, the, the tough thing is with, uh, the way, the big difference between the way the government works and the private sector is, uh, is how we have to go through a bidding process. And so what we've tried to accomplish is making sure that we open ourselves up to the availability to buy from the best available and the right price versus being pigeonholed into just buying from one or two or three different vendors that could charge us more than what is what I, we would consider a, a fair market value when there's others out there that we can buy from less. And this court has actually approved that in a couple of situations, but we still have to follow, uh, the rules and guidelines, which sometimes take us down a road that's a hundred percent, unfortunately, just not the best for us, but it is what it is. We, we, we have to follow the rules and guidelines that are given to us.
And, and I do think that if there's, um, if there's some things that we need to talk to our legislators about that might help us with that to save the taxpayers money. I'm, I'm certainly willing to, to make those comments to our legislators and...
Hundred percent.
I think that's...
Add that to our list of talking points with our legislators.
Exactly, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Judge.
All right, do we have a motion for, we have motions and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries...
Sorry.
Unanimously. John, do we need to proceed with sixteen B since we took action earlier?
Yes, Judge, we do need to, uh, take a vote on item sixteen B, which is actually amending the action that the Commissioners Court took on June fourth to, um, extend the county judge's disaster declaration. There was, the order itself indicated that the, that the disaster declaration would remain in effect until it was terminated by the Denton County Commissioners Court or the Denton County Judge.
Okay.
But there was a, there was an extra paragraph, uh, on the second page that created the ambiguity, and when the Denton County Treasurer brought it to our attention, we, um, conferred with her, and she agreed that it would be best if we amended, um, the action that was taken by the court on, on the fourth to delete the surplus, uh, surplusage, which is basically a typographical, um, well, it's just, it was language that was in the order that didn't need to be there, and I, I accept responsibility for that.
All right, there, no problem. I will go, the Chair will move on item sixteen B. The Chair will move to approve the amended local disaster declaration for the June fourth, twenty-twenty-four, removing surplusage. Any appropriate action? Motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is proceed to item seventeen, which is community updates. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Judge. Just have a couple of things here. Want to mention that, uh, there's some road maintenance, uh, and, and to be prepared for message boards, the Denton County Transportation Engineering Department performed maintenance on Liberty and Doc Sanders Road this week, which I know is a, a hot topic for a lot of folks in, uh, in the precinct I'm responsible for. So just wanted to mention that. Obviously, uh, we have Fourth of July coming up, and there's, uh, you know, quite a few cities that are, that are celebrating, so please enjoy your, your time and be safe with that. Also want to have a, give a shout out to, uh, no, I'm not a Texas A and M graduate or anything of that nature, but I want to give them a, a shout out for representing Texas very appropriately in the College World Series. They came up a little short, but it was a wonderful series. And, uh, congratulations to those gentlemen and the coach, uh, for, uh, putting in a valid effort. Um, the last thing I have, um, is I do, uh, this is the time I can comment on the, uh, White Oaks Mud that, uh, this gentleman was concerned about today. The county has been a hundred percent involved. We have, uh, been to every meeting. Um, we have, we, we were in the first, uh, hearing to get our name put on for the T C E Q. The reason we didn't, uh, say anything about the, um, the last one that the gentleman was referring to is, uh, we're going to be ready for whatever, whenever, so I wasn't worried about responding. It's really up to the others what, what days were good for them, so we weren't as worried about responding. Obviously, the Lake Ray Roberts Planning and Zoning has been involved. Um, and, and we do protect that area. We have the whole time. It's, uh, it is extremely important to not only, to this court, but the systems that live there. I live in the Lake Ray Roberts zoning committee as well, uh, or planning and zoning area as well. And, um, that was something that was not proposed to T C E Q originally when they were, uh, asking for their, their mud. And that's something that the county did recognize and bring to their attention to, to, uh, make sure that they were...
Part of the official record in opposition.
That's correct, because they were trying to elude or escape putting that in there as well. So, uh, I just want to make it clear to everybody, we're, the county has been a hundred percent involved in doing everything it can to support the citizens and what they would like to see happen, uh, within their, um, their, uh, the neighborhoods they live in. So that's all I have, Judge. Thank you.
Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. Well, uh, as Commissioner Williams said, we, we have July fourth next week, so there are a lot of, um, events happening. I'll just go through some of those. And in the Colony, we have on July fourth at six-thirty in the morning, a, the Thirty-Eighth Annual Liberty Five K and One Mile Fun Run. That's at Stewart Creek Park. There's an Independence Day Parade, um, at ten AM on the fourth, and that begins at Peters Colony Elementary School. And then there's another Independence Day Festival. It's at six PM, uh, that is at the Athletic Club. And then in, uh, Little Elm, we have a fireworks show on the fourth, um, at seven oh one West Elrodah Parkway. And another fireworks show around nine PM at nineteen, uh, Little Elm High School. And then in Frisco, we have Frisco Freedom Fest on, uh, the third, six PM, Simpson Plaza. Fireworks on the Fairway at the P G A, uh, at Omni P G A, and that's at six PM on the fourth. And in Corinth, Agora Music Fest Concert Series on the twenty-eighth at seven PM. That's free music for everyone. And then in Carrollton, uh, on the twenty-eighth, ten AM at Mary Head's Carter Park, there's a Pollinator Scavenger Hunt. That sounds exciting. Got to help out those pollinators. Uh, and then on the Independence Day Concert is going to be at, on the third at eleven AM, Senior Center, and then later, that evening on the third is the Community Fireworks Show at nine-thirty at Josie Ranch Lake, and that is all I have.
Perfect, great. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
I have the, um, today's children parade in Flower Mound on July fourth at ten AM. Also the Stars and Stripes Splash Tacular on July fourth, one to five PM in Flower Mound at the CAC. Uh, Independence Fest Flower Mound, July fourth, uh, five to ten PM. Live music by Pet Green, food trucks and vendor booths. Lake Dallas, I have a Lake City's Trade Days and Farmers Market, June twenty-ninth, eight AM to noon, and there will be a parade at nine AM. And in Lewisville, Sound of Lewisville, June twenty-fifth, seven to nine-thirty, Biddy Biddy Bunda presented by Wing at...
Say that again. I couldn't hear that.
Biddy Biddy Bunda.
For the record.
Oh, Bunda. You just wanted me to say it again.
I'd say it again. Chitty Chitty Bang Bang, I don't know what you're doing. Okay, all right.
Well, I'd like to just elaborate for a minute on something that Commissioner Williams said, and that was about the Texas A and M baseball team. For the first time in years, they made it to the, the College World Series. And we had a young man from Flower Mound playing on that team. His name is Cade Sorrell. You all may know his mother, Shannon Sorrell, who worked for Commissioner, or for Congressman Pat Fallon for quite a while. Anyway, uh, Cade was number thirteen. He played in left field. They had a, a great game. They got within one run of winning in the very last inning, but they started their rally just about three innings too late. So, but it was great to see a Flower Mound kid out there playing his heart out, and it just makes all Texans proud. And I am an Aggie fan. I didn't graduate there, but I have a grandson who did. And then as far as all relative events going on, I'm noticing that we have, uh, Independence Day celebrations starting as early as the twenty-eighth of June, the twenty-ninth of June, July, uh, third, and the fourth, and the fifth. And so it occurs to me, maybe we need to be thinking beyond Independence Day to Independence Month. After all, we have a month for elder abuse. We have a month for this and that and the other, and I'm suggesting, not that you get the entire month off, but that we have an Independence Month mindset, so that we celebrate the wonderful freedoms that we have in this country for a whole month. So for specific times, dates, places, I will be glad to share that with you on our website, but just remember, it's not just today. It's a way of life. It's our way of life, and thank you to God and our founding fathers for giving us that.
Perfect, thank you. That's a...